All right, I call this meeting of the Townschoop High School District 211 Board of Education to order. Governor Pritzker recently extended the disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties to June 29, 2020. Based on the current public health concerns, I, Board President of Townschoop High School District 211, as head of our public body, has determined that it is neither practical nor prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education today, June 18, 2020. I, as president, further determined that it is not feasible for the public or a member of our public body, chief legal counsel, or chief administrative officer to be present at our body's regular meeting location due to the health concerns related to COVID-19. This board meeting will be remote and will comply with the procedures set forth in Public Act 101-640 that Governor Pritzker signed on June 12, 2020. Through the roll call, we are verifying that the Board of Education can hear one another. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Jill Lefever?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item of business tonight is closed session. We have a motion that the Board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Jill Lefever?
Aye.
Okay, Board members, will please leave this meeting and enter our Zoom meeting for closed session.
Okay, so it is 7:30. We have returned to open session here, and we have a suggested motion that the Board return to open session. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second. And a roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Jill Lefever?
Aye. Okay, our first item of business tonight is recognitions, and we have none. Our next item of business is public comments and hearings. So, public comments from citizens were accepted prior to the meeting via submission to the email address on the district website, boe-mtg@d211.org. Submissions were due by 7:00 PM this evening. Due to the large number of emails received, I will read the emails in the order they were received. Each email will be read up to a maximum of three minutes, and I will read emails for a total of 60 minutes. Before I begin, Dr. Small, would you like to make any comments?
I would like to update the Board and the entire community on concerns recently facing our district. In regard to the start of the school year in the fall and summer school, district parents have been informed of the concept of three scenarios for our August 13 start, which I discussed at our made-board meeting. We welcome feedback from our parents at this time while we await the guidance from the state, and that feedback can be sent to us via an email address that was sent to them directly, as well as our students. The Illinois State Board of Education is expected to release their fall guidance in the next few weeks. This information will help District 211 recommend the potential scenarios to implement, including in-person learning for all students, remote learning for all students, or a hybrid of a smaller number of students in school at one time. All these scenarios will be in coordination with the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education. I, as well as our parents and staff, are concerned with the complications that surround each scenario. As educators, we are most effective when we can be fully interactive and face-to-face with our students. Updates will continue, ideally as soon as the first half of July. Our remote summer school courses will continue as we are closing our first semester and beginning second semester next week. In accordance with the Illinois High School Association and the Illinois Department of Health, District 211 is currently designing safety protocols that will provide an opportunity for small numbers of athletes, up to 10, to begin to exercise and work out on our campuses. Our parents and student athletes will be informed of these details as these opportunities are finalized. As guidelines change for both of these organizations, so will the opportunities that we offer our students, student athletes, in the summer. Like many of you, we are saddened by the recent events across our country during the past several weeks. As one of the largest high school districts in Illinois, District 211 has a very diverse student population. We see diversity as one of our strengths, and in each one of our schools, we want to afford all an opportunity to learn and learn from each other's experiences. We remain committed to embracing our core values of not only diversity, but also respect, equality, unity, and racism or disrespect of any form is not acceptable within our schoolhouse. We see our district not just as schools, but rather as a community where we can come together to learn and to grow in order to make a better future for all. Our individual schools have systems and groups in place to focus on continuing to build equity within our buildings. But as we continue to learn and grow, we look for new and different ways to express and embrace our differences. One of these ways will be the addition of, this fall, of a district-wide committee comprised of students, staff, parents, and board members who will analyze and make recommendations regarding equity and diversity. This group of varied stakeholders will come together to conduct a comprehensive analysis of our school and district practices, and ultimately make recommendations, set goals, in the form of a district-wide plan to ensure high levels of equity across our schools. We believe this will complement the work that has already been happening within our individual schools in the past years. By continuing to listen to everyone in our school communities with an open mind and an open heart, District 211 can be even better and stronger where all students can be heard and all can be successful. Thank you, Mr. Lefever.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Lefever, a point of order, please. I don't know how many emails there are, but could you forward the emails in their entirety to the Board, please? Because I think that we're going to lose some detail, depending on the time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, with the first one here. "To whom it may concern, as a Palatine resident, I am disgusted to learn of the recent comments made by Jean Hedrick Hedgepath. Schools funded with tax dollars should not be promoting political stances, religious views, or any other deeply held personal beliefs. The future of this community needs an education about the true nature of racism and how they can make a positive impact. That is not a political stance, but an obvious truth that Palatine embraces. I am petitioning PHS to swiftly terminate Jean Hedrick Hedgepath from her radical influence and clear misrepresentation of facts based on her personal ideologies. There is no place for that in public education. I want to believe the future will be bright, the future will be equal, and the future will provide indiscriminate educational opportunity. As a mixed family in Palatine, I am deeply concerned with the messaging our children are receiving from PHS. PHS needs to implement racial and diversity courses that accurately depict history and clearly illustrate strategy to mitigate further racial disparity and bigotry. Sincerely, Stephen Hanson." "To the District 211 School Board, now is not the moment to sweep things under the rug. Your acceptance of the teacher's resignation, allowing her to keep her pension and potentially to continue exposing children to her narrow-mindedness and instability, is sanctioning bad behavior. You would not tolerate this from young minds who are trying to figure things out, so why are you tolerating it, even sanctioning it from a grown woman tasked with forming and informing young minds? Please do not sweep it under the rug. You have a history of teachers and administrators doing horrible things because they know they'll simply get slaps on the wrist. Stop it now, demand better, that's what you're here for. Your toothless gestures, such as your video, are being seen for what they are, just gestures and indicative of the root of the problem. Meanwhile, what is your plan for promoting and embracing tolerance and diversity in the schools of D-211? Any plan short of the following is a slap in the face to all diverse students, parents, and everyone with whom they will ever interact. One, hire more diverse teaching staff representative of the demographics of the schools. Two, set standards for teachers, administrators, and students around diversity and inclusion with a zero-tolerance policy for those who aren't themselves tolerant, and hold all accountable to those standards. Three, provide a balanced, fair, and accurate curriculum that embraces various cultures and experiences and teaches students to value the differences. Included in that is studying biases, including recognizing them, and how to acknowledge and counter them. When can we expect a real action plan and timeline to implement? In solidarity, Mary Beth Grant, Reseda West." "Hello, District 211 Board members and fellow members of the public. After the recent events of a teacher sharing racist and hateful comments on social media and in the classroom, I am very disappointed in the school district. When I first moved to Palatine three years ago, I thought I was living in a diverse neighborhood that treated others equally. Now it is clear that the school is quite unhappy to turn the other, quite happy to turn the other way from racist behavior, and hope the problem goes away with minimal intervention. That is absolutely unacceptable. I am demanding that the school board take actions to punish this teacher and to prevent situations like this from occurring by having a zero-tolerance policy for racist behavior by employees and punishing those who discriminate against others. Yours truly, Rachel Reyes." "Hello, I am a former D-211-cremmed class of '07 student, and am wondering what happened to the zero-tolerance policy? This teacher from PHS was essentially bullying students in school and bullying members of the community online. Her family is now harassing people who speak out against her in her defense. If a student had been making racist comments in school and online, they'd face consequences. Why is she able to gracefully bow out in retirement rather than face consequences? D-211 has a long history of siding with teachers despite other staff, students, and parents witnessing horrid behavior amongst their peers. This has to stop. J.C. Parmacus." "I have a daughter that is a sophomore at Palatine High School. I saw a post on social media that is very concerning to me as a parent. Palatine High School teacher Jeanie Hedgepath is promoting some messages on her social media platform that could be perceived as controversial. In an era of school shootings, it's discouraging to see potentially dangerous messages from a teacher at my daughter's school. Every student at Palatine High School should have the right to feel safe at school, regardless of creed, race, gender orientation, sex, or socioeconomic background. The posts about her promoting mobilized septic tank trucks put a pressure cannon on them, hose them down, and also the posts about her need to get a gun and there is a civil war are very alarming. Since these posts can be viewed by her current students at Palatine, it could be perceived as intimidation for those students with views different from her. It could possibly feel scary, especially if you are a student of a minority. Furthermore, these posts could potentially encourage others to be violent, which could be dangerous during this time of high school shootings. Research shows children often mimic the behaviors of their mentors. Therefore, I feel that these posts are not healthy on a public platform. I believe teachers should not post potentially violent posts on their personal social media because research has demonstrated that when a student feels intimidated by their mentor, this not only undermines the trust that should encompass student-teacher relationships, but also degrade a student's sense of connection with their school. Poor academic performance, disengagement from social activist activities, and even dropout are some of the consequences encountered by students that feel disconnected from their academic environment. Online records indicate that she had been suspended once in 2016 and again in 2019. The residents that live within the District of 211 deserve to know if these actions are related to similar problems that have come up in recent events. Potentially dangerous behavior should not be tolerated, and it is the school's responsibility to deter any potentially dangerous behavior. When we teach using strategies that encompass an inclusive curriculum, we set our children up for success. Furthermore, when we work in an atmosphere that caters to children, we must put the children before the adults. Palatine High School has a longstanding reputation for excellence, and it needs to be a priority to maintain high-quality standards. Delilah Pollezoyce." "Time and again, the district has excused racist behavior. It is a duty of the district to help people of color feel safe, understood, and belong. The district has so far failed to protect its own students. It is important that a teacher with racist beliefs is fired. It is not just enough for them to be suspended or for the district to wait for them to resign. Do your part, D-211 Medha Praduturi." "Hello, my name is Lisa Chen. I am a Friends 2016 alumna. I am writing to express my concerns and provide a list of demands for D-211's anti-racist measures for the district. One, it has come to my attention that Palatine High School Social Studies teacher Jeanie Hedgepath has had a history of intolerable behavior in the classroom for which she has been suspended twice in the past. In addition, her third offense originates from a series of Facebook posts attached below that include racist, violent, transphobic, and sexist views about the gender wage gap. The Board currently plans to accept Hedgepath's retirement letter on 6/18, but the Board must recognize that accepting said retirement letter makes them complicit and avoids any responsibility for her inexcusable behavior. I am demanding that the district fire her and commit to long-term changes. Two, it is imperative that D-211 implement mandatory anti-bias training for district staff. In addition to making a more equitable and inclusive climate for students, this training will help improve student potential by dismantling harmful, biased expectations among teachers and faculty. Three, D-211 must also commit to hiring more POC teachers and staff. Research shows that all students benefit from teacher diversity, including higher test scores and graduation rates, and improved problem-solving and creativity skills for white students. Number three, again, currently, D-211 does not offer any ethnic studies courses. Ethnic studies courses empower students and have been shown by a Stanford 2016 study to bolster high school educational outcomes for all students, including GPA improvement by 1.4 points on average. I demand that D-211 diversify its curriculum by providing ethnic studies courses and making them a graduation requirement for all students. Number four, in addition, I demand that D-211 diversify its extracurriculars. This could include more funding for cultural clubs, ensuring there are more students of color in leadership positions, and more faculty of color as club sponsors. Number five, with its widespread use of technology for students, D-211 needs to implement technology and arts initiatives specifically for students of color who are underrepresented in both those career fields. This could include classes or extracurriculars that pertain to diversity within STEM and arts fields. Given that 18-year-old Nakia Crawford from Akron, Ohio, was planning on attending Central State University to study computer science, was shot to death just this past Sunday, 6/14, it is imperative that students of color be given the resources to succeed in these fields. Six, finally, I demand that school meals be fully or further subsidized by the district. Nutritious meals are critical for food insecure students." Mr. Lefever, that's been three minutes. Thank you very much. Lisa Chen, Friends High School, 2016, UCLA. Good evening. My name is Graham Dano. I am a former Palatine High School District 211 student and employee, Friends class 2016, summer HR worker in the summer of 2017. And I would like to urge the Board to add ethnic studies courses and hire more teachers of color, holding accountable questionable employees such as Jeanie Hedgepath, and making mandatory anti-bias training a part of becoming a teacher in District 211. Please do this, our future students deserve better. Sincerely, Graham Dano. "Yes to full-time in-class learning. As a parent of the District 211 student, I would like you to provide an option for in-school learning on a full-time basis beginning in August 2020. Given the tremendous resources across the district, I feel a district can devise a plan for in-class instruction that ensures the safety of our students and faculty while also providing the option of remote e-learning for those families with health and safety concerns. Divana Condon." "My son will be starting kindergarten at Virginia Lake this fall, and in anticipation of the upcoming board meeting, I would like to express my wish for in-person class learning. As a parent of a District 211 student, I would like you to provide an option for in-school learning on a full-time basis beginning in August 2020. Given the tremendous resources across District 211, I feel the district can devise a plan for in-class instruction that ensures the safety of our students and faculty while also providing the option of remote e-learning for those families with health and safety concerns. Thank you, Brooke Peprocky." "D-211 Board members, as a parent of two District 211 students, I would like you to provide an option for in-school learning on a full-time basis beginning in August 2020. Given the tremendous resources across District 211, I feel that the district can devise a plan for in-class instruction that ensures the safety of our students and faculty while also providing the option of remote e-learning for those families with health and safety concerns. Jen Hurwitz." "Dear Board of Education, as a parent of a District 211 student, I would like you to provide an option for in-school learning on a full-time basis beginning in August 2020. Given the tremendous resources across District 211, I feel the district can devise a plan for in-class instruction that ensures the safety of our students and faculty while also providing the option of remote e-learning for those families with health and safety concerns. Sincerely, Susan Gould." "To whom it may concern, hello, my name is Anisha Nareen, and I am a 2018 Conan High School graduate. I would like to express some comments about D-211's response to recent events. I feel that a stronger response to calls for anti-racism curriculum, firing racist teachers, and hiring more diverse staff is not only needed, but vital. Also, I would like to see D-211 divest from the School Resource Officer program. The officers who come into schools reinforce police propaganda, don't necessarily make students feel safe, and, in my experience with getting rear-ended in Conan's first lot, can't even do much to help students. I also like to see a divestment from military recruiting in our schools. Although it is a career path that should be open to students, military recruiting can be predatory for students of color. Additionally, I have had experiences with teachers at Conan who have advanced microaggressions and been arrogant, and I am sure other students of color across the district have had similar, if not more, severe experiences. Eighty-eight percent of teachers at D-211 are white, which does not inherently mean that those professionals don't put students first, but it does mean that whiteness is centered in the district. It does mean that the paradigm students are educated under is one that encourages assimilation and is a result of the punitive mindset that most people have encourages compliance. However, I believe that Conan and D-211 have the community infrastructure to not only make immediate changes by distancing yourselves from racist professionals and making curriculum and staffing changes, but also commit to implementing more restorative practices in our schools like restorative justice. I think that peer mediation clubs and student-led social justice groups can be taken to the next level where they work to build community outside of the current paradigm rather than within, where they can break out of a reform mindset. I think restorative justice practices are, as described here, if done correctly, could allow for the transformation of teachers and students and reduce rates of suspensions and expulsions. Obviously, this process and learning is long-term, but I believe it could be extremely worthwhile to invest in teaching students and staff alike what taking accountability really looks like in a country that, at most times, doesn't know where to start. Above all, I would like to see true accountability taken from district leadership. Best, Anisha Nareen." "Dear Dr. Small, Board President, Mr. Lefever Jr., Secretary, Mr. Young, Vice President, Ms. Klimkowitz, Mr. Rosenbloom, Mr. Dombrowski, Mr. Kramer, and Ms. Cavell, this letter is regarding a specific employee and her 20 years of service teaching social studies. Social studies, as we know, is the study of people in relation to each other and to their world. It is an issues-focused and inquiry-based interdisciplinary subject drawing on all science and political disciplines. My name is Donna Glavin, and I have known her personally for 12 years. She has a gift of giving and never stops. As a human being, she has a heart that is larger than life, as a matter of fact. I have never met a woman that stands up for humans of all races, herself and what she believes in. At one point in her tenure, she was involved in the Gay Student Alliance. She also was involved in developing a play on teenage pregnancy. Her belief has consistently been love for others seeking the truth and facts. I know in my heart her passion to make students better and more open to all controversial affairs was important. She is a warrior and a leader in her own right. Donna Glavin, Evanston, Illinois." "Dear Board, my name is Julie Schmidt. I am a Palatine resident, a homeowner, and a taxpayer for D-211. I have a daughter who is a future pirate. I taught summer school math for two years at D-211. I have tutored students in math pretty much anytime I hear of a need without payment because I too care about our community and D-211 students. My wish is to have this letter read at the D-211 Board Meeting on June 18 as a testimony for the teacher whose track record at Palatine High School is in question and whose character, I believe, is being misrepresented. I wanted to share a story which serves as just one example of the extraordinary things that this teacher has done for students of D-211. About two years ago, this teacher came to my house with three of her students for math tutoring the night before a big math test. During the day, these students were telling this teacher about their struggles in their math class, and she found a positive solution. I know someone that can help. I spent many hours with them. I did not know these students at all. I cared because this teacher cared. We did not bash their math teacher, we just helped. This is just one simple example of how much she cares about her students and about this community. To say she does not care is just not accurate. I suppose it is relevant that this was a diverse group of girls, but at the time, it was not relevant. It is only relevant now because of the false portrayal of her. I have spent hours listening to this teacher's detractors because information is being thrown out as facts. In some instances, it is misinformation, at a minimum, incomplete information, and in some instances, they are blatant lies. I'm not going to fight hatred with more hatred, but at any point, if you would like to see the long list of inaccuracies, I would be happy to share them. Mostly in taking this time to listen, I have learned, as I am praying that the D-211 Board of Education has as well, that her private comments that were on the news were taken out of context. I'm not writing this letter to say that I agree with the comments or to argue that these comments were kind, but I know what is in her heart. I know that she is not the person that her detractors are saying that she is, and I know that she has a right to free speech and to talk privately to someone that calls themselves a friend, but who is clearly not. I know that soundbites while making for interesting news do not have a place in determining the fate of a teacher that has a long track record of caring for her students and her community. The phrase "actions speak louder than words" is most appropriate today as her actions over the last 20 years as a teacher are not aligned with soundbites, words that are being used against her. This teacher has made a positive impact on more than her fair share of students at PHS/B-211. I believe you know that. You have a choice to allow her to retire with grace or to listen to people that have specifically described her as a sacrificial lamb. Please do not allow this. Thank you all for your time and consideration and your ongoing commitment to our community. Respectfully, Julie Schmidt." Respectfully, Julie Schmidt. As a 20-year resident of Palatine District 211, as the mother of the teacher under review and as the grandmother of graduated, present, and future students at Palatine High School, I find this situation has been heart-wrenching, not just for the community, but for our family. The only firsthand knowledge I have of her as a teacher are the many letters over the years she has received from students thanking her for making school so meaningful. If she was not held in high regard, why did the parents of a boy who committed suicide ask her to present a eulogy? She is a widow and the sole supporter of her daughter, who will be a freshman this fall. I believe she resigned so that her daughter and niece would have a school year unfettered by the innuendos and false accusations of an activist group as regards their mother slash aunt. In these volatile, uncertain times, it is very difficult to make hard decisions in the public forum. I hope and pray you will be brave. Barbara Hedrick. D211 School Board, as a 27-year resident of Palatine, a parent of a former Palatine High School District 211 student, a current student and a future student, I ask that the District 211 School Board allow the teacher that has been under investigation for Facebook posts to retire and receive her earned pension. This teacher allegedly made controversial Facebook posts on their personal account, not as a representative of PHS slash D211, but as a conservative living in a state with a liberal governor. While I do not agree with those posts, I do agree with her First Amendment right to say them. These posts were brought to the media spotlight by an existing teacher, a community activist, and former students in an attempt to discredit her name because they don't agree with her politics and believe that those views are brought into her classroom. She has been teaching at PHS for 20 years. Were there ever observations by the district and school administration in her classroom? Were complaints of racial or political bias in her classes ever brought to the administration or board in the past by students or teachers? When you conducted your investigation, did you investigate her 20-year career for racial and political prejudice and bias, or was the investigation based solely on her personal social media posts? I have seen and heard former students express surprise because they didn't know that she felt this way politically or state that she changed because they became friends with her on Facebook after they graduated, and they didn't know she had these views. Many others have indicated that she allows students to voice their opinions in a safe way and does not give her opinions while other Palatine schoolteachers shoot opinions and ideas down if they are not liberal. Is that equity, respect, and diversity, or is she being made the sacrificial lamb because her guy is in the White House and the majority of her students and peers feel that he doesn't represent them? As it pertains to a video of an incident in her classroom four years ago, I don't agree with or condone the tone, the message, or the swearing, but she wa- but wasn't she already disciplined for that incident? If the administration and school board failed to give appropriate discipline at that time, it is not fair or just for her to be on trial again. In the wake of BLM and the district calling for equity, respect, unity, diversity, this mob mentality will not bring differing opinions, people, and ideas together, but further the divide. Is that what you want to teach the students and the message of unity that you want to send to the entire Palatine High School community? I certainly hope not. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Jill Anderson, Palatine, Illinois. Superintendent Small, Mr. Lefever, and the Board, I've known the subject teacher my entire life. I'm the youngest brother of six siblings, and she's, she the oldest sister. She's been passionate about history, politics, American government, our systems of justice, diversity, and philosophy for as long as I can remember. Usually fiery in, in her beliefs on these subjects since her late teens. You'd be hard-pressed to find someone more knowledgeable about these subjects, as well as more vehement in her stance than my big sister. She's always encouraged an interest in different ways of thinking about a subject and as a libertarian or independent thinker, has always been an opponent of the two-party spoils system that has been caving to special interest groups in this country for decades too long. When people echo the insipid catchphrases and political trappings of these two ancient party ideologies, she'll be the first to go into details on how and why they came about and tell you to wake up. This is not a new thing or a bad thing that goes back 20 days or 20 years. It is an old thing and a good thing that goes back 20 more years than that. Some are born to inspire people to think differently, and in these difficult times of peaceful protests continually erupting into mob violence and kangaroo court justice, you're not going to find the solution by focusing on the problem. It cannot be found by vociferously undermining systems and people that have been proven to work for the better, for true diversity and goodness in the community, and push them away because you have no solution of your own to offer, just unsubstantiated ramblings and criticisms that are but projections of the very things they purportedly, they purport to defy. In these days of social media vigilantism, those in power should themselves be vigilant. Should everyone who thinks differently than you or makes a comment that can easily be taken out of context be pushed away because they have a different political view? Should people now be hired or fired based on their willingness to agree with everyone that agrees with you? Is everyone that disagrees with you a racist or a product of entitlement or privilege? I can assure you, we cannot relate to the notion of privilege. We did not grow up with it and should not be forced to fall into this tortured, new rage mentality of teaching people where their gratitudes and gratitudes should fall in life. That is not an outsider's job when it is, it is simply called envy. Should a barrage of phone calls incited by the latest, most manipulative, yet empowered, political arm in our country continue to be allowed to undermine people's careers without a fair and impartial hearing or an open, impartial, unbiased vote? Are street mobs and intimidators who hunt people down with unveiled labels going to continue to undermine justice and those in-
That's been three minutes.
Thank you, to stop them and educate them on the errors of their ways. Mike Hedrick. Dear Board, hello, my name is Martin Hedrick III. I am Jeannie Hedgepath's sibling and as one of my avocations, vocations, a group and private yoga meditation instructor. Circa 2006, Jeannie recruited my services to make yoga available to a handful of faculty there, and after about half dozen sessions, asked me if I would teach a larger group of students who might benefit from the experience. Because I hadn't typically taught youngsters, never had kids myself, and was living in Skokie, it took quite a bit of cajoling to convince me to do this, but she persisted until I relented, and at her own expense, it happened. Little did I know, there'd be over 100 participants. And although I was a bit overwhelmed, to this day, it's a lar- it's the largest group I've instructed, it was pretty awesome that Jeannie would go to such lengths, above and beyond the proverbial call to make it happen. I sincerely wish a faculty member at my high school cared enough to have made that available in that period. An even more dramatic example of the positive effect Jeannie's had on your student body was in the memorial services for her husband Jay. The student turnout at the Wake alone made the viewing line interminably long, well over 90 minutes as I recall. Of course, as much as anything, they were demonstrating their fondness for Jeannie. That support was a true overwhelming sign that Jeannie was an effective, positive influence in so many of your students' lives. Finally, I want to express my disdain for the venue that was the straw that capped off Jeannie's career there. We all recognize that Facebook is under a lot of scrutiny in these times. The controversial aspect is ongoing. Too many are adversely affected by it. Therapists spend an inordinate amount of time dealing with a fallout. People in general are not protected from its downside, nor are they adequately warned of the hazards. My educated guess is you have other staff on the hot seat for varying reasons right now. My sincere, humble hope is that you are or will strongly consider protecting your staff through more direct, clear, written policies and programs to prevent the kind of drama that is occurring now throughout our culture. If it isn't just entertainment or a platform for various personal views, if Facebook and other like platforms will not vet the veracity of content and the nefarious actors who abuse it, we need our institutions, particularly educational, to be more vigilant before the next issue of this sort. And of course, there will be a next one very soon. Thank you for reading this commentary, and I hope you enjoy your summer. Yours, Marty Hedrick III. Dear Board of Education, while I am not the parent of a current student attending District 211, I am a grandparent of several. I have read the face, the post on Facebook encouraging parents to send emails to you. I am concerned that the motivation for most of that, their children get out of their homes so that they can go back to work. Although this is important, it simply cannot be even a fraction of a consideration for the Board. The only consideration, in my opinion, needs to be the health and safety of the students, faculty, and support staff. I have no idea how you can ensure that at 100% school population, but I trust that the Board will use state guidance to find the best way forward. Thank you for considering my opinion. Best regards, Lori Esquif, Palatine, Illinois. No to full-time in-class learning. As a parent of a District 211 student, I am not comfortable sending my child to school on a full-time basis beginning in August 2020. Please provide a full-time remote e-learning solution. My son will be a junior in the fall, and I am only comfortable with e-learning. Please contact me with any questions. Melissa Ortega. Hello, my name is Hallie Cohen. And myself and all three of my siblings are alum of Fremont and Palatine High School. I'm extremely upset to see an educator from our school post such blatantly racist, sexist, and hateful remarks publicly on Facebook. I am even more disturbed by the videos and firsthand accounts I have heard from my siblings about her behavior in the classroom. My siblings testify that they had this teacher in class and experienced her read Bill O'Reilly to the class daily with no equivalent left perspective and scream at students about her personal reactions to politics and current events. Even if you want to argue that a teacher should be able to hold personal opinions in private, it is clear that she inappropriately projected these in the classroom in hateful, trauma-inducing tirades in the classroom and by requiring reading of inappropriate materials. It is clear that the school district has been complicit in this for years by allowing this to continue. No teacher should be allowed to speak to students the way she has. This is why I am writing to you, calling that accepting her retirement is not enough. It sends the signal that you can retire with dignity as the district continues to be dismissive of inappropriate racist behavior of teachers and staff. I'm calling for the school to, one, fire the teacher. Two, create a plan that is specific with dates and numbers to hire more POC teachers and implement a continuous anti-bias training for all staff. Thank you, Hallie Cohen. Hello, my name is Clara Loturet, and I grew up in the D211 schooling, graduating from Fremont High School in 2014. It has been brought to my attention that Palatine High School Social Studies teacher, Jeannie Hedgepath, has a history of intolerable behavior in the classroom for which she has been suspended twice, suspended twice in the past. Hedgepath was first suspended in 2016 for one day without pay, followed by a second suspension of four days without pay in 2019. Hedgepath's third offense originates from a series of Facebook posts where she stated violence against protesters is the only way to stop the riots. The Board currently plans to accept Hedgepath's letter of retirement at this Thursday's 6:18 Board meeting. However, the Board must recognize that accepting said retirement letter would make them complicit in evading any condemnation of her behavior in addition to setting a dangerous precedent for how they will respond to future instances of this sort of misconduct among staff. In the event of her retirement, the Board signals that a quiet and dignified retirement is the strongest condemnation offered, offered for inexcusable behavior. The actions of this one teacher is a symptom of the larger D211 system that is complicit in racism. The problem extends beyond the actions of this one teacher. After hearing the voices of students coming forward and their own experiences in her classroom after failed attempts at remediation, and then after still failing to fire her, D211 has made it abundantly clear that they will stay silent about issues that compromise the inclusivity of students' learning environments. Firing this one teacher does not fix the system that has allowed her back into the classroom without effective remediation. However, it sets a long overdue precedent that this behavior will not be tolerated at D211 schools and sets a higher standard for educators and staff. We call on the Board to stand by their statement that racism or disrespect in any form will not be tolerated by demanding that they seek Hedgepath's resignation from her position. Thank you, Claire Loturet. Hello, my name is Abby, and I am an alumni of Fremont High School who is currently living in the area. I am upset that there is a teacher from a school in the district making openly racist remarks and not being held accountable. I have heard stories and seen videos of this teacher being racist and sexist, and I am not okay with the district allowing this person to quietly retire, let alone the fact that you have allowed her to teach social studies for years. The district must fire the PHS teacher and commit to longer-term changes. I know this is not the only time things like this have happened within the district. I would like the district to commit to hiring more diverse teachers and POC teachers as well, launch ethnic study classes. This is only the beginning. Thank you, Abby Cohen. As the parents of two D211, District 211 students, I would like you to provide in-school learning on a full-time basis beginning in August 2020. Given the tremendous resources across the district, I feel the district can devise a plan for in-class instruction that ensures the safety of our students and the faculty while also providing the option of remote e-learning for those families with health and safety concerns. Kindly, Bernice and Chris Gebelhaus. I know and read Ms. Hedgepath's Facebook post and frankly agreed with her comment. It is the First Amendment right of every person to speak their truth, and it is also everyone else's right to listen or ignore. To fire a 20-year, 10-year teacher because someone interprets her comments as racist is insanity and shows how fragile our society and rule of law has become, pandering to racism commonly used as a weapon to control, subjugate, and dominate people. If you fire this teacher, you are all but eradicating the principles our great country was built on. Everyone I know who is conservative is afraid to speak their mind for fear of retribution from someone or some institution. This is what your school is now involved in, creating fear. And you are all just afraid of BLM, which is nothing more than a terrorist group. I thought schools were there to develop curiosity and passion, not subjugate themselves to fear and intimidation. You all need to question your true intention and ideology if you condone this type of horrendous action. If your school truly wants to provide social justice and equality, provide all-black people, all-black, brown people of color, free education, and the computer equipment, and online books to get the opportunities everyone is supposedly fighting for, then we can see who really wants the opportunity or simply just wants control to get easy money. With freedom comes responsibility. Our country has become dumber and dumber each year while countries like India and China surpass us on every educational metrics. Your Board actions are precisely an example of why we have over 7 million jobs that cannot be filled because our country is more interested in idealizing strippers and entertainers instead of learning STEM skills to fill the jobs and future of our country and economy needs. Wake up, Board, and do the right thing for the future of our country. Denise M. Grievous. Dear Dr. Lisa Small, this letter is in regard to Ms. Hedgepath. My name is Holly Hedrick. I have known Jeannie for over 23 years. She is my sister-in-law. I am dismayed at the events that have taken place. Jeannie is a dedicated teacher and has poured her blood, sweat, and tears into her profession. The only thing she loved more than teaching would be her students. It's unfortunate the teachers are not afforded the same rights as the rest of us. I can vouch for her character. She has never displayed an ounce of racism, and it's shameful that she is being painted in that light. It's sad to see such a valuable teacher mischaracterized. Well, though she has strong opinions, she seeks the truth and justice for everyone. It will definitely be a tremendous loss for your school and students. Sincerely, Holly Hedrick. My name is Hannah Butt Ban. I am a 2018 Fremont graduate. I'm writing this to address the lack of accountability that D211 has had in reference to racism and perpetuating white supremacy within schools. After reading about the Facebook post that a Palatine teacher had shared, I was appalled that the only words I heard from the district was that you would investigate. I don't understand what more proof you needed to see that the educator was racist and to-
I don't understand what more proof you needed to see that the educator was racist and to fire her immediately. There is no place in those word, no place for those words ever, but even more so when they are coming from an educator who interacts with and has an impact on students daily. In the past few weeks, I have also heard of other stories from current and former students in the district who have experienced countless microaggressions and explicit racist remarks with either little action taken by staff or action that came too late. I am disappointed in the district's conduct and hope that now you are finally willing to make some major changes. The district must diversify the curriculum. This includes examining curriculum and identifying where white washing occurs. Obvious examples, US history and English books written by people of color are scarce, if not nonexistent, at our schools. Holding staff and the district accountable, admitting mistakes and firing staff who are racist. Increasing the number of mental health professionals instead of police presence within schools. Anti-bias training for teachers and staff that is continuous, not a one-time workshop. Hiring more POC teachers in order to better reflect student populations. Providing resources for parents to begin continued discussions of issues such as racism and white supremacy at home. Providing resources for traumatized individuals. Loudly affirming and declaring your stance as an anti-racist institution and backing it up with intentional action. This will not be solved in a one-time workshop, but a complete breakdown of our current system without proper education that explicitly calls attention to these problems and the ways to prevent these social injustices from occurring in the classroom as well as society in general. We are setting ourselves up to follow a continuous cycle of trauma and violence. Please do not refrain from taking action for the fear of being political. Everything is political as these issues deal with who has power and not who does not. Hannah Ban.
Hello, as someone who used to attend a D211 high school in recent years, I can only remember having one teacher who was a person of color. There is a long overdue need to hire more teachers of color who can represent and encourage students from different backgrounds. I was outraged to learn of Jeannie Hedgepath's actions as well. While some might sweep it under the rug saying she has a right to free speech, her actions do too much damage to claim that it is harmless. Her comments explicitly disregard the glass ceilings that people of color have to face. By refusing to see systemic racism and only recognizing the trivial offense that she feels, it only deepens the divide that people of color have to cross in order to have the equal opportunity that America has always preached but never truly fulfilled. Giving her the dignity to retire peacefully signals to others that the D211 district is complicit in systemic racism and will continue to perpetuate if you follow through with this decision. It is disgraceful. I demand that there be purposeful action to hire more teachers of color for Jeannie Hedgepath to be explicitly fired. Diversified curriculum for students to take classes on cultural and ethics studies and for there to be more staff training in how to recognize racial bias as a simple start to paying back the deep racial debt we owe to the black community and to people of color in general. Thank you, Susan John.
Hello, my name is Megan Beach. I am a proud graduate of Palatine High School, 2015. I am currently a high school teacher myself and invested in a lot of the conversations regarding equity and diversity within schools. I had wonderful teachers at Palatine High School, many of whom pushed me to think critically, question the way the world works and act in a way that advocates for justice. Seeing a teacher at Palatine High School post racist comments is incredibly disappointing. Witnessing D211's non-response and refusal to hold her accountable has been even more disappointing. As mentioned, I had many great teachers. However, there were larger systems at play that often made any kind of critical education difficult. I specifically remember several landmark texts such as Ralph Ellison's Invisible Man being banned from our AP reading lists due to their approach to discussing US race relations. I see now that it is an approved text, but why only for AP courses? And why wasn't it in 2014? I didn't realize until I went to college that ethnic studies were options for classes, much less options for majors. Why does PHS offer Rhetoric of Cinema but not African-American Lit or Latinx Studies? The district must fire the PHS teacher and commit to long-term changes including anti-bias training, hiring more POC teachers, launching ethnic studies classes. This will serve as a starting point to create a more inclusive and relevant learning environment at D211 schools. Thank you so much for your time, Megan Beach.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Gronin. I am the parent of an 11th grader at Frem High School. In my professional role, I am a child/adolescent social worker, part-time lecturer at the University of Chicago, diversity trainer and anti-racist accomplice. While my son and I are Caucasian, we also have an unseen identity as a religious minority in the district. Every year, teachers and administrators fail to consider religious accommodations other than Christian when planning academic calendars and school events. Horrific current and historical world events related to discrimination based on our religious identity, if discussed in class, are often done without acknowledgement the impact of seeing the images of oppression and hate may have to students with that identity. Students and teachers have also made disparaging remarks about our religious/ethnic identity, causing my son to remain silent for fear of retaliation. The students of D211 deserve to be able to learn in an environment free from microaggressions and any overt and covert or covert acts of racial discrimination. The fact that the Palatine High School teacher has a known pattern of overt racial discrimination and teaches students the facts of history is unacceptable. Words are not enough. Action is the only option. D211 must immediately terminate the Palatine High School teacher and any other teacher that has engaged in ongoing acts of aggression and displayed ignorance and hate towards students. She was supposed to be uplifting and educating. Swift individual action is also not enough. Decisive structural changes need to be implemented. That include, one, providing mandatory anti-bias and cultural humility training to all D211 staff and faculty. Two, hiring more teachers and staff who are black, indigenous and/or people of color, BIPOC. Three, develop and implement ethnic studies courses available to all students. Four, integrate anti-racist curriculum as a mandatory component of health education classes for every student in the district. Implementing these changes immediately provides an opportunity for D211 to position itself as a leader in inclusive and cutting-edge education. A district that allows for the voices of minority students to be amplified and supported equally alongside their peers. Prominent American businessman Max Dupree stated, "We need to give each other the space to grow, to be ourselves, to exercise our diversity." "We need to give each other space so that we may both give and receive such beautiful things as ideas, openness, dignity, joy, healing and inclusion." Every student in D211 deserves the right to learn in an environment that allows their ideas to flourish and their voice to be valued-
That's been three minutes.
-and affirmed. Thank you, Melinda Gronin. Thank you. My name is Barb Vojak and I am sending this in support of Jeannie Hedgepath. I have known Jeannie for over 40 years since going to Resurrection High School together. Jeannie has always been an open-minded, passionate person who was both great at listening and having conversations and seeing all sides of an issue. Jeannie has never been a racist. What I have observed in today's world is a tendency to mistake one's political views with racism. Jeannie, who is a free thinker and a teacher, encourages her students to engage in discussion that will encompass all sides of an issue. We have to remember one half of the country leans to the right with a more conservative view. If that view is not the same as yours, it is wrong to think of them as racist. This is where the division in our country comes from, not understanding the views of others. This is why I support Jeannie. I think it is important here, all sides of an issue, and to discuss what you don't agree with. I admire a teacher who will have that conversation with students. These are the students that will become young adults, more tolerant of others and help bridge that division. Thank you for reading, Barb Vojak. To the Board of D211.
My name is Magdalena Garcia and I am an alumna of Schaumburg High School, 2012. During this trivial time in our history, it has been disheartening to see the lack of action taken by the district. As someone that will have family attending 211 high schools in the fall and next year, I am concerned to know that my family will be attending schools in which little has changed since I was a student. During my time at SHS, I experienced racism firsthand through microaggressions, profiling and many other ways. My parents often had to get involved in order for someone to advocate for me as administration was not quick to listen or respond. You now may be wondering what kind of student I was during the high school years. Although that doesn't matter in the slightest, I will share that I would consider myself a top-notch student as co-president of NHS, a band member, a lacrosse player and an AP level student. I had wonderful connections with my teachers and my peers, yet I still had these experiences. One of the many demands being made in this meeting calls for a more diverse teaching staff and curriculum. Throughout my four years of education at SHS, I never had a teacher that was black or a person of color. I never had the opportunity to engage with literature that represented my culture or my identities. I never had mentors that guided me through the college process as a first-generation student. Although this may seem like minor details, various studies have proven that the lack of representation in academics leads to lower self-esteem for students of marginalized communities. If we can't see ourselves in our classes, whether in our teachers, peers or the curriculum, how could we possibly know all the greatness we are capable of? Board, you all sending a video to students and families is not enough. You all making a task force to investigate or research equity work is not enough. You all sitting here and making promises is not enough. It is time for all to step up and make the changes outlined for you all today to ensure that the current and future students of this district have a positive experience to reflect upon. It is time for you all to stop centering whiteness and continuing to make your white students comfortable and understood when your black and brown students suffer. As someone that works in higher education, I understand the challenges or the bureaucratic ways that one may choose to use as an excuse to slow down processes of becoming anti-racist. However, I understand that sitting on the sidelines and sending passive videos is not the answer or the actions needed to become anti-racist. Mr. Lefever, that's been three minutes. Thank you. Best, Magdalena Garcia.
I am a student at Frem High School and am half African-American and half-white. The student body at Frem is so ripe with racism and privilege, it is disgusting. The majority of which is white, Asian and Indian. The large majority of people who use the word aren't the 2.5% of black students. It is the Indian and Asians who think since they are not white, they can say it. I've personally seen black people, especially since most of the time you don't have a choice other than to surround yourself with whites or Asians at Frem, be peer pressured into allowing their so-called friends to say the N-word. The culture at Frem High School is ripe with privilege and closet racism mixed with woke white people who say a lot but do very little to help rectify the situation. Caleb Henderson.
My name is Varshini Romanathan. And I am a 2016 Frem High School graduate. I am writing today, having reflected on my years in high school and with utter conviction that we owe our students more. As a Frem student, I took the most challenging set of courses available to me, received the highest GPA possible and graduated as an academic scholar. Despite this well-meaning quest for academic success, I'd left Frem with my education having failed to convey how we individually and collectively repeatedly let down our black community. In my entire four years of completing exclusively honors/AP coursework, I had only ever encountered two black students in my classes. In my entire four years, I also never even questioned it. Carefully swathed in a protective bubble of the best Frem had to offer, never had I stopped to consider the plight of a student whose racial trauma is largely disregarded by the school or of a student at risk of literal expulsion for minor disciplinary infractions. Meanwhile, my history courses exalted figures such as FBR and Woodrow Wilson as morally courageous American heroes while casually ignoring their roles in maintaining segregation. My US government class overlooked voter suppression as even a topic of discussion and my English classes covered maybe four books in total by authors of color. In all aspects of my education, the very real turmoil of black individuals was absent. While I understand that the disparities in black educational attainment cannot solely be pinned upon a single high school, my own anecdotal experience makes me question what my classrooms could have looked like if D211 did more than make toothless statements touting how it values diversity. What could have been different if D211 explicitly condemned racist behavior? What could have been different if D211 truly affirmed and legitimized the identities of its students? I think it is safe to say that idle contemplation on what could have been is ultimately unproductive. However, D211 seriously needs to rethink its role as an institution, especially one that claims to be committed to providing an equitable education for all. Moving forward, I hope D211 can work to provide an education more susceptible to the needs of its communities of color, particularly black communities, with the following as starting points. One, fire Jeannie Hedgepath. The current action taken on this issue, gestures that intolerable, inexcusable behavior at worst, will be met with the ability to silently retire with no pushback or enunciation. Two, an upheaval of the curriculum introduced-
Mr. Lefever, that's been three minutes.
Thank you, Varshini Romanathan.
D211 Board, I'm Mahima De Seti and I'm a Schaumburg High School alum. As a former student of D211 and a member of the community, I'd like to share some thoughts about how to better equip students with an educational experience that exposes them to the voices of racial minorities in this country's history, something that I personally felt was lacking during my high school experience. This effort is extremely important because it will allow students to view history not through an Eurocentric lens, but in a way that validates the experiences of minorities in this country. In the effort to offer students a more diverse educational experience and become an effective anti-racist community, I believe the following measures should be taken. One, holding D211 faculty accountable for their actions is extremely important. Racist comments or actions should not be tolerated within the community and action should be taken immediately. Two, hiring more POC teachers. Incorporating diversity into the D211 faculty that reflects the diversity within the student population is a necessary step to create a community that accepts and uplifts diverse voices. Three, ethnic studies classes. As I stated earlier, giving students the opportunity to study history in a more diverse lens will help them form a more accurate worldview that does not exclude the history of minorities in this country. It is not only beneficial to them, but to the larger community as they go on to engage with people of many different backgrounds. I believe the steps administered effectively will have a lasting impact on the way students interact with their community/the world. These measures will be most powerful enacted at the school level. It is vital that students are provided the education they need to graduate high school as empathetic people willing to listen to and engage with people of different backgrounds. It is our responsibility to ensure that people committed to teaching them view so in a way that promotes an actively anti-racist environment. Thanks, Mahima De Seti.
Mr. Lefever, the 60 minutes have expired.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kovak. That will conclude our public comment portion of the meeting. Next item on tonight's agenda is presentations. And we have a presentation on the-
Next item on tonight's agenda is presentations, and we have a presentation on the 2021 five-year financial projection update. For that, Dr. Small, would you like to make any introductory remarks?
I would, and I also would like to do a microphone check, please, with Lauren and Barb just to ensure that we can all hear you.
I'm here.
Lauren, I'm sorry, can you go first, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Lauren, you're going to need to speak up or get closer. Barb?
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Lefever. I would like to introduce Lauren Hummel, our Chief Operating Officer, as well as Barb Peterson, our Controller/Treasurer. Our five-year financial forecast presentation tonight is coming forward from the Budget and Finance Meeting, which we held on June 4. Lauren and Barb?
Are you able to see the screen okay?
Yep, looks good.
All right. Lauren, you will need to continue to speak up, please.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Over the past several months, we have provided the board with information on the district's current financial status, budget development, and long-range financial projection. Since the last financial projection was presented to the board in March, a number of known and variable assumptions have changed impacting the district's financial outlook. Tonight, we will review those assumption changes as they pertain to our long-range District 211 remains in a stable financial position with resources prioritized to sustain quality instructional programs for our students. We have achieved the strong, stable position of operating debt-free while utilizing our annual budget and reserves to complete major facility and life safety improvement projects, reduce our IMRF liability, all while prioritizing our numerous student programs. In order to operate in a sufficient manner, we have implemented $5 million in budget efficiencies over the past five years and continue to identify areas of further reduction for the coming year. Through the end of April, the district remained very close to its budget plan. In tonight's board materials, financial statements are provided to the board that detail our financial position through the end of May, which reflect a shift to a more favorable budget position, which is expected to become more favorable even yet through year-end. The unprecedented times that we are in have resulted in variance in both revenue and expenditures in our budget. While shown on this slide that we anticipated ending the year unfavorably for revenue, just today, the state released another categorical aid payment which will shift us to ending on budget and revenue by the end of June. This payment was not anticipated in June and therefore is not reflected in the revenue portion of the chart that's projected on this slide. Due to school building closures, food service sales will be less than budgeted. However, federal income will be favorable due to reimbursements that were received for the meal bags that were distributed to our families. Corporate personal property replacement tax had a one-year increase and is expected to remain favorable through year-end. Overall, while ending unfavorably by less than a tenth of a percent, property tax revenue will end very close to budget plan. Regarding our expenditures, we anticipate ending the year under budget. And here, again, a budget variance is shown of $6.2 million or less than 2% relative to our budget plan. However, we continue to receive invoices for major capital projects that are taking place this summer and expect that that could end slightly less favorably than what is shown on the slide here. Salaries are expected to unfavorably as we spent less on our substitute teachers, athletic and activity event workers, and overtime costs, and our benefits have dropped off significantly as people have not been seeking the same level of medical care during the health pandemic. It was anticipated that we would spend less in the areas of purchase services, supplies, and utilities with our school buildings being closed. We also spent less than budget on our capital outlay, largely due to delayed distribution schedules and delivery dates on several purchases, including items such as our major chiller equipment. Our non-capitalized equipment will end unfavorably as educational technology purchases were expedited in some areas to ensure that we would have adequate time to receive and prepare this equipment for our students for the summer school and upcoming school year. The change in our anticipated ending position will be reflected in our five-year forecast. From the prior financial forecast that was provided, several economic factors have led to changes in assumptions for the upcoming five-year period. The largest contributing factor to the change in revenue assumptions is the rate of CPI that is used in our forecast model. While the 2019 rate of CPI is known and was a rate of 2.3%, we have decreased our assumptions for all future years. We are now estimating 0% for the 2020 calendar year and have adjusted the five-year historical average accordingly, which is now 1.7%, and that is used in our remaining three years in our financial forecast. In addition to reductions in CPI, it is estimated that the district's property tax collections will decrease for the coming year as well. While we normally receive more than 99% of our property tax collections, it is projected that we will receive 97% in fiscal year 21 due to a combination of delinquent taxes and tax refunds. Sorry, I'm going to go back there for a moment. The district will be eligible for $1.1 million in Federal Cares Act funding to reimburse for COVID-19-related expenses attributed to educational technology needs, sanitation, and long-term closure costs. While land sale proceeds are still anticipated, they have been shifted from fiscal year 20 to our fiscal year 21 assumption. Salary and benefit costs assume normal operations and all other assumptions remain relatively constant from the model that was shown in March. It is often complicated to review the relationship between the rate of CPI, the levy, and the budget in the forecast model as they overlap years, so this chart provides a summary of the relationship between years. Using the upcoming budget as an example, the CPI rate of 1.9% from calendar year 2018 was used in setting the levy limit that was approved in December of 2019 and will be used to set the property tax revenue budget for the 2020/21 fiscal year. You can see the relationship of all years, the future four years of the projection model and the detailed relationship between years here for your review. You've seen this list of considerations before, and I won't go through each of these tonight, but there are a few that I would like to review. First, in these unprecedented times, we don't know what our next school year will look like. While we don't know, we are preparing plans for a number of scenarios, including those that Dr. Small detailed tonight, which include remote learning, complete remote learning, having all of our students onsite, or a hybrid approach of the two of those scenarios. However, we are just preparing one budget and will adjust it up until the time of our budget adoption with the best information that we have available. So our assumption for now is that our buildings, our buses, our programs will all operate under normal conditions. Salaries will be paid as they are under the contract for all groups. Second, property taxes in this budget have been set and have been based upon the 2019 levy that was passed by the board this past December. The upcoming 2020 levy will not impact the amount of revenue in the 21 budget. And finally, the budget will include $9.25 million of capital project work and $4 million of life safety work, which is currently underway, the bids having been approved by the board earlier this year. All of this project funding will be internal through the use of our budget and reserves. Later tonight, we'll bring forth the recommendation to transfer $4 million from working cash fund to the operations and maintenance fund. As work is already underway on the summer's life safety projects, this transfer is needed to pay for this work. In previous years, we would also request transfer for capital projects. As you may recall, we are closing the capital projects fund at the end of this year and will be reporting these projects within the operations fund moving forward. Since we no longer will have a capital projects fund, there is no longer a need to transfer funds for this purpose. Other than transfer the funds, the budget, as well as operations and maintenance fund reserves, will be used to fund the projects. This is our most recent five-year forecast. I'd like to start by drawing your attention to the bottom section of this slide first. These are the numbers of when we last presented the financial forecast back in March, and we anticipated having total fund balance percentage of 43.5% by the end of 2025. Now, as we look at the chart on the top portion of this slide, you will see the change in the CPI and levy collection rate this year 21 has had a significant impact on our forecast. We forecast a deficit budget in each of the five years, which includes costs for capital and life safety projects, as well as to use a portion of the land sale proceeds. By fiscal year 25, the total fund balance falls to 35.1%. The district is in a stable financial position, and by my and our five-year forecast, it allows adequate time to make adjustments as needed to preserve the financial position of the district, continue to support instructional programs for our students, and act responsibly with the resources that we are stewards of. We will continue to provide the board with routine updates on our five-year financial forecast as we review decisions that may alter our financial position. Over the last five years, the board has implemented more than $5 million in budget efficiency with the reduction of staff, changes to operations, insurance plan changes, and purchasing efficiencies. While a preliminary list of items has been compiled for fiscal year 21, this list will continue to grow as we increase, it will continue to increase as we develop our budgets departmentally over the next few months. Currently, we are looking at locking in some of our natural gas and electricity rates, which should yield us favorable expenses next year. As our fleet of propane buses continues to grow, replacing diesel buses, we see increased savings in fuel and maintenance costs. Although unpredictable, we hope that our investment in employee wellness will lead to lower medical costs. And finally, we are bidding more and requiring additional quotes on non-bid items in an attempt to create better pricing through more competition. We've spent some time tonight talking about the anticipated decrease in property tax collections, and there is another unique challenge regarding property taxes that will face the district next year. Last month, Cook County approved an ordinance that delays the date for which interest charges will occur on late property tax bills. While bills are still anticipated to be mailed on time and will have a due date of August 3, property owners will not incur interest charges on payments until after October 1. The chart in the middle of the slide shows the district's cash flow over the course of two years. The circles represent the month of June each year. June is one of the lowest cash points of the year for the district. Typically, we receive close to half of our annual tax revenue in July and August and begin paying for our school year's expenses, and now we do not anticipate that we will receive this tax revenue until October or possibly November. The delay in receipt of property taxes could result in our fund balance declining further than its June levels and dipping below our target at 33%. We are fortunate that the board has a fund balance policy which allows us to utilize reserves versus issue short-term debt. Fund balance is measured each year as of June 30, and we are expected to be in compliance with the board policy by the next year-end. We try and provide you with information on each segment of our budget twice over our budget season, either in presentations or board reports, before the budget is approved in its entirety in September. You've already seen capital projects and life safety projects back in March. At the Budget and Finance Committee meeting two weeks ago, we presented the budgets for the IMRF and Social Security Fund, working cash and transfer. And tonight, we provide a write-up on these in the board materials as well. At the August Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we'll present the operations and maintenance fund budget, as well as the educational fund budget, and the complete tenet budget. And then we will share this information once again at the August board meeting. The budget will be posted for public review following the August board meeting. Then in September, we'll have a public hearing on the budget and approve it as it must be filed by the Board of Education by September 30. Thank you for your attention this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have on these topics.
Many questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring us to the next item on our agenda, that is the consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. Next, we have special reports and communications. First item is Freedom of Information Act requests. Does anyone have any questions here? Our next item is graduation dates for the class of 2021 and class of 2022. Any questions here? Next, we have our workers' compensation insurance program. Any questions here? That brings us to our 2020, 2021 tentative budget, transportation, municipal retirement, and social security, and working cash funds. Any questions here? And our final report is the post-bond issuance compliance report. Any questions here? All right, that will bring us to unfinished business. We have an amendment to the terms and conditions of the sale of real property located west of Plum Grove Road and north of Wise Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, between Nitty Development LLC and Board of Education of Township High School, District 211. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the terms and conditions of the sale of real property located west of Plum Grove Road and north of Wise Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Um, yes, I would like to ask if it's possible that we alter the proposal of changing the approval period to September 15, which is two days before, I'm sorry, that is, I believe, the proposal, and the mandatory closing date be changed to October 15, as it would also be the same as the Board of Education October meeting. Because as I understand it reads right now, is that the dates, I believe it's the, is it the approval date? Which date is it that does not necessarily correlate to a Board of Education meeting? Is that the September date?
The dates that are presented here coincide with the village meeting schedule, as they would be the ones that would determine the approval for the, for the development of the land. So that's the approval date, and then the closing date is set, which would not require any formal, excuse me, formal board approval. It would just be able to go to close since the board already took action to sell the land. So that's why those dates are set, and it would provide enough time for both parties' attorneys to prepare the documents necessary to close following the approval by the village.
So the extension of the approval period to September 22, which falls after our September Board of Education meeting, does not matter to have board approval at that meeting? Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question or a request. In reading the material, you know, we've, we've moved the goalposts. This, this would be the second time. I'd like some, I'd like some detail on what is, why we have to extend this time. Is the Village of Schaumburg changing the specifications? Are they not moving on the, the changes that they've asked the developer to do? I mean. A three-month extension, that's, I mean, why? What's causing this?
I think when, when we look at the size of the development within the community, this is not a standard development that the village is working through. Sixty acres is certainly a, a large plan and there's no existing infrastructure. There are numerous details that are being reviewed. With every set of comments and review, there's a period of time that the developer has to go and. Obtain response to those comments, whether that, and many times that's an outside agency that they are relying on to be able to prepare responses to those documents or modifications to their plans. So while. We are working with both parties every time we've made the schedules and worked to understand. What seems to be a realistic timeline. I think what changes is that we don't understand the time that may be necessary on some of the comments or the revisions from the outside agencies and how that's driving this. So. This timeline provides. Hopefully, an adequate time for both parties, the both village and Nitty Development are. Working diligently at obtaining approval, and I know they are working together. There have not been. I think the last time we, we brought an amendment forward, there were some changes that need to be made. Those have been. Worked toward in good faith by both parties and both have favorable reports to share with us when we have, when we meet with them.
My impression is that, I mean, I don't know why the Village of Schaumburg couldn't have provided this, this is the specifications, meet them. It seems like there's, there's some back and forth here. The developer presents their plan, the Village of Schaumburg says, okay, except for this. And then they come back with, with a remedy to that, and then the Village of Schaumburg says, ah, you'd also need to, you need to take a look at this. Is there any way that we can get a. A present, a presentation from both the Village of Schaumburg and the developer at the next board meeting? Because I, I think this is, I think this, this is mired in bureaucracy.
Lauren, based on the conversations that you have directly between the builder as well as the village. Are there any concerns that you have had in terms of. It being delays that are. Intentional or in any means that things are just being pulled back to slow down without a true. Initiative or purpose behind the reasons that more changes or more information is being asked.
Was that directed to me or Ms.?
No, that's Lauren. Lauren, Lauren speaks to both sides directly, hearing both voices and both perspectives of the issue.
No, I, I certainly am not involved in the, the very specific details that are being exchanged between parties. But what I will tell you is that as. As requests or modifications are made by the village. They are, Nitty is working to prepare the information that's responsive. Sometimes there may be. A variance requested on one party or the other, and they're working with both sides to obtain that or deny that, and. That, that takes a little bit of time. But again, I don't, I think the number of details that are involved in the. In developing sixty acres of property. Are, it's just a very involved process and it's. It seems to be related, you know, largely to some of the, the engineering. There's wetlands, so that involves some outside parties. That just take additional time for review. I will say that there have been updated plans that are now posted on the village's website. That provide detailed information on what is proposed for the area, so you can see the progress there, which is exciting to see.
So the first amendment that was brought before the board to modify the date. That was at the developer's request for the additional time. Is that correct? Or was that time and schedule that we developed?
That, that timeline, the first was done in conjunction with both the village and the developer. I always check with both sides to make sure that it adheres to what they are anticipating for their time needs moving forward.
And, and that's the case with this. Amendment as well with the, I believe, the additional earnest money. Is that correct? And the, the village had input on that?
The village and both, and Nitty Development had input on the timeline. They did, the village did not have input on the additional earnest money.
And where did that value come from?
The additional earnest money is really, it's a, it's a contribution by the developer to show that they have commitment to the. To the development plans that they are working toward approval. There would be no additional money that's paid to the district. Unless they were to cancel their agreement, which they have. They continue to work toward approval. So. You know, at the time, that would be, any of their earnest money would be a credit toward the purchase price of the sale of the land.
And we. The original bidders on, on that property also had development plans on the village's website, and so. They were a lot further along earlier in the process than where we are now. I'm not sure that I'm seeing the, the three-month extension as, as really being something that's, that's feasible. Outside of just the fact that they're both working towards, towards that commonality. What, what is our opinion on how many amendments would be reasonable?
I'm hopeful that this would be our last amendment. What I can tell you is that with the village. Review process, Nitty is further along than the last developer was at the time. So. I can't speak to when the village puts the information up, but I will tell you that they are further along. With these, the various stages of review that are required by the village.
Thank you.
Superintendent Small, have you spoken personally with the mayor of Schaumburg about this?
I have not, but I have spoken to Nitty about it.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would ask that you do call the mayor and ask him what his opinion is, please.
I guess I have a question then, Mr. Kramer. Are you concerned that Nitty is going to back out of this?
No, no, I, my concern is, is that, that the Village of Schaumburg is moving the goalposts.
I think, you know, having had experience with some. Building in Schaumburg, I know they're very particular and they do make. A couple of different requests at times. And I think one of the things we've got to keep in mind is with the COVID. I'm not certain what kind of staff they have and who's working from home and, and things of that nature. So. But I do feel comfortable that, given the information that Ms. Hummel has given us, that we're moving ahead with it.
I feel comfortable with this. I would feel, I would feel very uncomfortable if they came back and asked for yet another extension, you know, in three months' time. But for now, with what we've been presented, I'm, I'm comfortable, but I, I will express. Preemptive discomfort should we be asked to do this again.
My opinion is that this is pretty typical. I've seen projects come back for extensions from, because of the building department. Because of the zoning department and other interest, interested parties. Like Paul said, we are dealing with. The Army Corps of Engineers too on this project, and they have an important. Things constantly can change and can delay the project. And I've been involved in projects like this have gone. Over a year and a half, two years because of extensions. So I have no real concern about this.
Any other questions for Dr. Small? Or Ms. Hummel? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. That will bring us to new business. Our first item here, we have resolutions. Directing inter-fund transfers for life safety projects. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution. Providing for inter-fund transfers of four million dollars from the Working Cash Fund. To the Operations and Maintenance Fund effective after July one, twenty twenty. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. Next, we have a resolution, the Appointment of School Treasurer and Assistant School Treasurer. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution to reappoint Barbara Peterson. As School Treasurer and Lauren Hummel as Assistant School Treasurer of Township High School District two eleven, effective July one, twenty twenty. And further secure treasurer bonds as presented for a combined total of thirty thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. Next, we have a proposed policy revision, prevention of and response to student bullying. This is presented tonight as our first reading. Any questions about this?
I do have a question. So my question is, you know, in the amendment, we specify every reasonable effort to be made to follow up with the complaint. From the time it's submitted within ten days, and I just wanted to. Double-check that, that includes all complaints. So that includes any anonymous complaints made through. You know, the website or student software. Is that right? That includes every single allegation of bullying that's made?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, that will bring us to our next item, Health and Dental Program Claims Administration. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education continue the self-insured program for health and dental benefits for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And retain Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide claims administration services for medical, dental and utilization review. And further to purchase aggregate and specific stop-loss insurance from Blue Cross and Blue Shield at a level of three hundred fifty thousand dollars as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Question for the, are, are these contracts with the insurance people? Do we, are these, have we gotten other bids? Is this a renewal without a bid? I'm, I'd like some clarification on that.
This is a renewal with our, with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They are our carrier. We do not get a bid when we are in the middle of our contract. Our plans are specific to Blue Cross Blue Shield plans. But we do negotiate the rates with them over a several-month period of time.
Have we looked at other insurance carriers to, to see, to see if there's a better deal?
We look at other insurance carriers on our stop-loss coverage. We, the plans that we have had. Since I have been in this role have been specific to Blue Cross Blue Shield. So there is not. They are the only ones that would have an HMO plan, for example, similar to what we are offering. So that would be something that would be done during the period of negotiations.
And when was, when was this negotiated? This is, this is renegotiated annually?
No, this would be with our employment contract. Negotiations, which are done every. So many years. Their current contract is a four-year period. During that time, we made several plan adjustments, but Blue Cross Blue Shield is our. Provider, and I know prior times where we have reviewed additional insurance companies, the. Blue Cross has been favorable with their rates.
Okay, so the, the process has been, the contract says we're going to give this, and then you, then you go out and look for a company that can provide this particular set of, of criteria. Is that correct?
Yes, and these would be the fixed fees that are associated with our insurance plan coverage.
Understood, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Oh, go ahead. I, I was asking, can, can the board be provided with the last. Review relative to other market providers? Just to ensure that we're leveraging and, and that these fees that, that we have are, are not open-ended?
We have, we have not done a review under this contract because we are set with those plans, if that's.
No, understood. You did state that you do reviews. The last review, can we be provided with that to, to validate where we are?
I would, as I mentioned, it hasn't been done under my time. I know that it has been done, but I would have to find when, when that was. I'm not sure that that would be relevant as we are, our rates and our plans are very different now compared to what they are, they were in prior contracts. So our, our provider is specific to the plans that we have in place.
No, I, I understand, but at, at some point, if we can get a better plan for a better rate as a self-insured. As a self-insured entity, we, we should at least be exploring that. That, that would be something that we, we would want to have on the table at some point.
Mrs. Hummel, did we not, did we not review different providers when we were putting together the, the most recent employment contracts? Weren't there some side-by-side comparisons and the like that we were looking at?
We have side-by-side comparisons with some of our other providers are. As I mentioned, our, our stop-loss insurance providers. Prescription drug providers, those types of things, but we have, when we were negotiating, it was based upon the Blue Cross plans.
Roll call.
Dombrowski's question, maybe rather than. Look at historic because maybe it's been some time since we've done that. That's something that we definitely want to maybe take a look at when we are, when it's time to renew our contracts again.
I agree with that. That's, that's where I stand on this.
Well, the, the problem with that is, is that we're locked into our contract negotiations on the, on the. On the union negotiations. We would need to do some sort of assessment or change the timeline such that we could visit this before we enter negotiations.
Preliminary, yeah.
Yeah, with our, with our employees, our employee group.
Then let's do that.
Yeah.
As we can't, we just need to back into that and, and evaluate the, the different contracts, you know, such as this that we have.
Any other questions on this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. The next item is Athletic Training Services Agreement Extension. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the two-year contract agreement amendment with Athletico. Physical therapy to provide assistant athletic training services at a cost of twenty-five dollars per hour for school year athletic trainers. And thirty dollars per hour for summer camps athletic trainers for each of the years ending. June thirty, twenty twenty-one and June thirty, twenty twenty-two. With total costs not to exceed two hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred dollars annually and further to authorize. and further to authorize the superintendent-elect or designate to execute the agreement. Can someone please move that?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
This, Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. And next, we have the sale of surplus school property. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the sale of used surplus lawn mowers and a 2006 Ford E350 eight-passenger van by way of public sealed bid, public auction site, or company trade-in. Can someone please move that?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. Uh, next, we have board member expenses. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Stephen Rosenbloom to attend the triple I conference November 20 through 22, 2020, as submitted. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Of course, I.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. Uh, next, we have potential topics for future discussion.
Yes, I, I, I'd like to recommend and propose that the Board establish an ad hoc uh open committee for the community to address um our current practices and pre-procedures through an equity lens and, and make recommendations for improvements.
Yeah, I, I would support that. I, I do uh commend the administration for moving quickly uh with the superintendent to get ahead of this and to proactively uh a- a- essentially um produce or create a task force. If we could perhaps by the next board meeting, have a timeline and a process from the administration on how that would, how that would work, how the selection process would work, how the meetings would be held, and that sort of stuff. It's a great idea. We, we need to do it. We need, we need to do it now, uh, but I think we, we, we'd like to see a timeline and process drawn out for us.
Absolutely.
And then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
No, I, I, I have, I have a different proposal, a different, off another topic for a future discussion.
Mr. Dombrowski, I just want to clarify, are you proposing a committee in addition to the task force? Or are you, because Mr. Kramer's comments made me think it seemed like they're the same. I just want to make sure I know what I'm going on. Do you want to have another task force in addition, like a, or, or?
I, I, I think the Board has to have a open committee similar to our finance committee where we can hear directly from the community versus um a task force which may be more structured and, and the participation may be handpicked.
So what I would ask is that we, if you're comfortable with this, Mr. Dombrowski, let's bring this topic up again when you actually see the details of the timeline, the involvement of the Board, and the involvement of the feedback that we will be receiving and who's involved in that feedback. Um, because we might be, what, what you are proposing in, uh, I think we will be meeting those needs, and then that might be a better time to make a judgment call on that.
Well, I'll leave the discussion to the rest of my board uh with your recommendation, Superintendent.
One thing I would like you to consider also is, I know each of the schools has a student advisory group of utilizing them in some way, um, because I think in most of the schools, they're a pretty diverse group. They cover socioeconomic, um, just a diverse group of students. I'd like to make sure that we include that group of kids.
Yeah, I'm comfortable waiting to hear back from Dr. Small on more of her, her idea or plan, so.
Agree.
But it doesn't, um, I, I have a hard time seeing it being, you know, pushing back the time at all. There's still time, but.
Well, the quicker the better.
Sure. Anyone want to?
Yeah, uh, I have a different proposal for, for uh future business. It's, it's a different topic if, if we're.
Hang on one second, are we, is everybody that's wanted to say anything said everything on this one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kramer, please.
Yeah, I, I don't know if uh my fellow board members are aware that the District 214 waived all, essentially all student fees for the coming student year. Uh, I would like to revisit uh that, that particular thing, which we did vote on in February, I think, to, to see what can be done for the, for the oncoming year. Uh, the rationale, it was in a newspaper, uh, was that District 214 said that, that their operating expenses uh resulted in at least $7 million of a surplus, which would offset the, the uh, the fees that were necessary to, to maintain status quo. So I would like to revisit that at the next meeting.
My understanding is that it was referred to um in the media as registration fees.
It's registration fees. There was also that they're waiving the driver ed fees, uh, the bus, the bus fees, you know, if you live a mile and a half away. Essentially, essentially, essentially everything that I read, except for like, like lunch, lunches and that sort of stuff. They're still going to keep the parking lot fee.
I don't know if it was the bus fee or not. I, you know what, we can get more information on it. I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit it, so.
But if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna waive something, I'd rather see that, you know, the, the lunches would get waived as opposed to, to the bus fees, because that's a choice.
And that's why.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, I've, I've been waiving all stuff. I made that pretty clear, so, but let, let's bring it up at the next meeting if we can.
I think it definitely works. Dr. Small, are you uh comfortable with what it sounds like the Board wants to hear on this?
I am, I am certainly uh glad that we're having a discussion on this. Uh, we do have, obviously, there's logistics behind our registration, our enrollment, and um, I guess, uh, let me default to uh Mr. Kovak or Ms. Hummel in terms of the ability to waive versus the ability to refund and delaying our registration and enrollment.
I can't speak to the processes behind the financial transactions of refunding. I can share with you the timeline we are under. That was July 13th, our registration would open. Uh, I think the next board meeting is scheduled for July 16th, so there would be some crossover if there was a change.
I have a feeling that if we have this as an item on our next agenda and registration opens on the 13th, we may see uh members of our community delay their registration until the 17th or 18th, just thinking.
It is, it is feasible for our delay. I just uh would ask that if we are, if the Board is going to take action, that they do take action in July. Therefore, we can proceed forward with just a small number of days of delay versus another four weeks beyond that.
So, well, um, maybe Dr. Small, you can give us some sort of assessment at the next meeting of some of the details. And then, you know, the Board will have that information. And if you, if you want to bring your proposal at the time and the rationale, that'll be great. The Board already did take action on this for the upcoming year, so um it's as if our Board is moving the goalposts. And uh, that's probably a difficult environment for people to work in, and it's moving the goalpost for the community who relies on the information we give them, but um you can provide us some information the next time, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, and if, in order for us to kind of get, get our heads around it and, and to, to determine where we stand on it, end up, it would be great that in the, the successive board letters, uh, that maybe that topic be, you know, a paragraph on there and what you find out and the impacts and what, what works and what doesn't work.
Okay, anyone else for future topics or potential topics for the future? Okay, that will bring us to our liaison and committee reports. The first up is Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization, uh, and Ms. Klimkowitz.
Right, and we had our meeting uh the beginning of June. Uh, recognize the shining stars were the graduates and the retirees. Um, we also, um, as far as federal updates, uh, Dr. Hackett informed us that she had had a brief conversation with Senator Duckworth in a phone conversation regarding the challenges of the remote learning, especially with um the special needs students. Uh, she expressed the concern of the loss of Medicaid funds and the opportunities when the need for remote therapies continue in the parameters that are established with the, the guidelines that students have. Um, she also asked that uh there be help for the small businesses, because many of the small businesses do provide work experience for the special needs students. And um, you know, hopefully, they can reopen as soon as possible. So that was at the beginning of the month, and I know some things are starting to open now. Um, as for the state updates, um, again, we're looking for some type of clear guidance for uh opening the, the school year and especially for the special needs students because of um, uh, the one-on-one instruction that many of them need and the support that those kids need. She also shared with us um a video that was prepared. It's called Ben's Story, and one of the young men that's um very involved in his continuous improvement plan and very person-centered transition planning. And it talks about his journey and how he's developed and become um much more um of an independent person, you know, with the special needs that he has, and become much more comfortable. So Ben's Story is uh something that can be shown to the various chambers of commerce, uh, to employers, to potential donors, legislators. It's, it's a very well-done film talking about how involved uh the staff is, how involved the family is, and the growth of this young man. Uh, we also voted on the budget, so the budget was approved. We presented the uh meeting dates for the upcoming school year. There will not be a meeting in, in July, though, so our next meeting will be August 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Ed Redd and Mrs. Klimkowitz.
All right, and I, I did sit in on the, on the Zoom meeting. They had Senator uh Don Harmon, and he spoke very briefly. Um, talked a little bit about business loans, uh, hoping to have about a $5 billion line of credit, also looking for federal funding, um, uncertain about transportation for students. And I know we may have touched upon that a little bit, about how many students you can have on a bus and what costs would be uh involved in that. Um, and then Sarah mentioned about uh that they're going to take an opportunity of the summer to look at a variety of things, uh, as far as debt extension and supporting the schools for that. Um, again, the board meetings, as Mr. LaFever presented, you know, them being in uh the Zoom form that we're using because of the gathering, limit of gathering. Um, also Phase 4 is coming, and Ed Redd is going to be putting together a toolkit to help with fall opening and some talking points. Um, also talking points for us working with our legislators, uh, and Ed Redd is willing to help in any way that they can. Um, she spoke briefly about some questions that parents are presenting and a few things that we talked about today, and some of our parents mentioned about remote learning and, you know, can they have that as an option as opposed to being in a classroom and so forth. Um, she also stated that over the summer, they're going to reflect on this past year, um, looking at the restraint bill for special ed, trying to get it to be workable. Um, also looking at the discipline bill, addressing some of the inequities, and also taking a review of Ed Redd. Um, and she also indicated that next year is the 50th anniversary, will be the 50th anniversary dinner for Ed Redd. So um, that's the Ed Redd.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. So uh, two weeks ago tonight, uh, we met and reviewed the same information that at tonight's meeting was the uh presentation of the 2020, 2021 five-year fiscal projection update. And we also reviewed uh the essentially the same information that's in special reports and communications, which was the 2020, 2021 tentative budget, transportation, municipal retirement, social security, and working cash funds. Uh, the agenda and the presentation from our meeting is still, as always, available on the District uh website and where we get our board meeting information. Uh, so that will bring us to our Facilities Committee. Uh, Mr. Young or Mr. And or Mr. Dombrowski will report, please.
Well, I stopped by several of the sites earlier this week, and uh I stopped by Schaumburg, and I saw the Culinary Arts Lab that was under construction. The underground work is, is completed, and actually, it's a fairly large room, and I think it's going to be an excellent culinary uh placement for our kids that want to learn how to uh cook and everything else. Schaumburg, they had this slab replacement where it's near completion. This is where the slab was uh sinking, and they didn't really come down uh with any idea of why it was sinking, except that it wasn't reinforced into the uh building structure, which is what was done. The locker rooms uh from both the boys and girls, the floors have been removed, and the underground plumbing work is starting as well as the demolition for the mechanical systems. Conan, uh, their tiller replacement is underway. The first tiller has been removed, and the new piping and ductwork installation is underway. Uh, the football field over there is under, is in progress. Uh, the subs ground is uh ready, and they expect the carpet to be delivered next week and installation on that. And as soon as they complete that, the tracks will be resurfaced. And then we go to the Schaumburg, they had their boiler replacements underway. The last, I think the last old boiler will be removed next week. Uh, Hoffen Estates, they're, they had issues with their pool, uh, pool foundation, and those repairs have been completed. Uh, Hoffen Estate, Schaumburg, and Fram are in the process of having their elevators uh modern, modified or modernization, and that's going along very smoothly. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Dombrowski?
No, we haven't had any meetings, and you know, it's a summary of Mr. Young's site visits.
I'm having a hard time hearing that, what you said. Is everything okay?
We, we had no meetings, um, and that was just a summary of the site visits performed by Mr. Young.
Okay, thank you. Um, that will bring us to uh partners for our community, uh, the Evening Community Services. Uh, Ms. Cavill or Mr. Kovak?
I'll share that the team met on Monday. It's not typical at this time of year for the group to meet. Typically, our summers are, are free from gatherings, but uh the different partner agencies felt it was important to uh share what they are independently doing to respond to local families' needs, given the extent of the health crisis that people are uh coping with. So it was really just a summary of uh the independent agency actions as opposed to planning for the evening services program.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, next, we have announcements and a handful of dates, important dates in June and July. And then finally, we have a suggested motion that the.
that the Board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, and deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Can someone please move that?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
A discussion, just quickly, can we, can we take a five-minute break between this one and the next one?
Yeah, let's, let's do that. So it's, it's 9:36. How about you want to shoot for 9:40? Is it good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sure. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
I don't see him.
Let's continue.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Okay, we're shooting for 9:40 or thereafter. We'll see you all in the closed session again. Teachers Union, Kimberly Villian, effective May 2024, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Teachers Union. Robert Gotti, effective June 2021, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Operations Maintenance Group. Kenneth Harris, effective December 2024, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Teachers Union. Mary Kervik, effective May 2024, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Teachers Union. Colleen Little, effective May 2024, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Teachers Union. Dizdra. Send, Dizdra Malin, Malinsky, effective May 2022, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Teachers Union. Ceznanzia Salafosky, effective December 2021, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Operations Maintenance Group. Ruth Spazoff, effective June 2022, according to the Master Contract of United Support Staff. And Christine Wheat, effective May 2024, according to the Master Contract of the District 11 Teachers Union. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve a total salary allocation for technology, transportation, clerical exempt, and management employees at an overall increase of 1.9% over the 2019-2020 school year, effective July 1, 2020, for the 2020-2021 school year. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Hi. All right, if there is nothing further.
May I make a comment? Mr. Lefever, I applaud your perseverance in, in reading those comments for an hour. It was really a great effort. Thank you for your, thank you for doing that.
Thanks for the encouragement. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.